It's a good spot.
Where were you guys previous?
Franklin County.
Okay. Good evening, we will call this meeting to order for USD 348 Board of Education. At this time, I'd ask that we stand with the agents.
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the four D, have an amendment to make. We have the journalism folks have a conflict tonight, so they're going to come back next month, so we'll strike item two under D recognition. Have we heard anything from boys' basketball? Are they, do we know they're still planning on coming? I haven't heard anything. I just got the, okay, the roster. Okay, well, we'll assume they're coming. Okay, well, if not, if we get to that point and we need to punt, we can do that too. May I have an approval of the agenda with noting, striking the regional journalism contest, contest award winners, please?
Yeah, so move with the, uh, striking of the journalism contest award winners recognition.
I'll second.
Phil moved and Tony seconded. All those in favor of approving the agenda with that amendment, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Organizational items, parent, family, and community engagement opportunities and/or announcements. Principals, if you have anything going on, feel free. If not, forever hold your peace. Uh, the Booster Club does invite the entire community for, um, attending prom lock, promenade this Saturday at 5:00 PM. Uh, it's scheduled to be at Sullivan Square, uh, but in case of inclement weather, Plan B will be at the Performing Arts Center. Everyone is welcome to that. All right. Consent agenda. Upon approval of those items, if there's a motion for, to accept those.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll second.
Chris has moved and Tony has seconded to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Onto recognition. First up, uh, we have, we wanted to recognize a local business, Om Grom Yoga. They're located downtown and we're recognizing them tonight because they have made, uh, specific efforts, uh, not only in the past, but they continue to do so to provide, um, sessions for teams, groups of students. They've done that again this year in a big way and they're also offering, uh, discounted student features. It's a nice way to promote health and, and all the things that entails and they just continue to be, uh, a wonderful partner for the students of our district and staff. Uh, but they've particularly focused their efforts on student outreach, so, um, we want to recognize them. We'll make sure that we send them this congratulation, but if you could join me in a round of applause for local business, Om Grom Yoga for their performance. We'll see that they get that. Um, we also have, as we said before, journalism will happen next month. We're supposed to, um, recognize basketball, but they're not here, so I'm kind of, let's, let's buy some time. Let's skip a little bit, just in case they are still coming.
What's going on tonight? It's 6:34 and we've been.
I know, and that's what I don't want to, so we'll put that to the side for a minute and go ahead and proceed to the educational program highlight, if that's all right. Usually these other items take a bit more time, so I want to buy some time for the basketball.
Usually Bryant has some announcements.
Okay, you did hear me. We have Jill Boyle from the Intermediate Center presenting tonight.
Yes, and I was asked to come talk about our garden club, so I'm going to share photos because I took three years of garden club photos off my phone today and made this folder, so you're going to see them. And the garden club, from what I can gather from, um, people I've talked to, was started 12, 13, 14 years ago. Mary Bessie, who's still in the district, um, was in this building and, um, one of her duties was extended learning and she wanted to start a garden and I believe Dave Hill and Baldwin Education Foundation, there was some grant going on and they built, um, a fence to kind of designate our garden and ever since then, I say we've been taming the prairie out there because it's kind of, um, hard soil, but, um, I, um, there we go. I'll just go through pictures of the last three years. Um, we do some gardening during school. Students can sign up to come once a week in the fall and the spring to work after school. On Wednesdays this year, I'm trying to get out to the garden every Wednesday afternoon during our afternoon recesses, so we can, um, on Wednesdays, if they'd rather leave the playground and come garden, they can come do that with us. These kids are now seventh graders in junior high, so these pictures are about two years old, um, but you can kind of see what it looks like out there. Um, these raised beds are starting to deteriorate, so we're going to have to do some replacing here. Um, you've noticed our tower garden over here and we actually have a second one. We purchased one with money that we fundraised and then we had another one donated by a local business that no longer wanted theirs, so we can grow stuff around indoors and, um, when it's time to leave library, they can go by and grab a piece of lettuce or something if they want to. And we've started doing, um, plant sales and that's basically how we raise money to, um, to buy stuff to help our outdoor garden, so, um, usually one at, um, Valentine's Day and then one close to Mother's Day and the Mother's Day one's coming up and we sell lots of, um, peppers and tomatoes that we start right here and then we take them outside on warm days and get them acclimated and then we can sell them. We sell them for a dollar a piece because we're not really trying to make money, we just want people to start growing stuff at home. So this was last year. This is out in the garden again. Growing stuff. And you can see in the summer, if you don't show up, we get weeds growing everywhere. So this is probably June or July last year. I'm really bad about taking photos, but this is probably a before photo. Some of these iris have been brought here, I've been told from Marion Springs, um, Charlene Potter transplanted them, so some of the stuff that we're still growing here were, um, at other schools that are no longer around. More from last summer. More junior high kids back when they were in elementary. Um, this is potatoes. And in the summer, I've started meeting with, uh, kids who want to come back once a week in the morning, um, and that's when it's really fun because then we get to start harvesting stuff. And I've learned that if we plant later, I don't try to rush things in the spring, I just plant. We usually don't start planting most of our stuff till summer because then we can harvest in the fall when we come back to school and we're all here to do that, so. Here's some more potatoes from last summer. Yeah, and then this was our, uh, we actually grew enough watermelon two years ago that everyone got a small piece of watermelon, every kid in the whole school. So that was a big accomplishment. Uh, yeah, so this is a year ago, like the fall of '21 when we got back to school. Here's our watermelons we were really proud of. Yeah, so that was our best watermelon crop we ever had. More watermelons. Um, so any questions while I keep showing you pictures of our?
I'm curious, I saw some hoops over here. Is that to shield from sun or is it for frost protection?
Um, frost protection if we need it, it's, but again, it's so windy out there. I'll get to it here in a second, but we just got a greenhouse, which is a, a big upgrade for us. So if you have a chance to step out or just look out here, um, Lisa Patrick had some grant money and we, I just happened to talk to her at the right time and we got, um, a grant for, uh, we got a greenhouse, so it's changed everything because now we don't have to rush anything and I don't have to have, I mean, we still have a lot of plants in here, but not nearly as many as we would otherwise.
And how many kids in that club generally live down in the school area?
Um, well, I have to cut it off at 40 because it's just not safe to have more than that, but I could have, I mean, 40 is what I allow to, to do the after-school part. Um, and this was my fall group, afternoon kids. And, but during the day, on Wednesdays, um, they can come over during recess and it's hard for us to get together for a picture, but we tried here. Okay, so there's our greenhouse. We just got out there. And that's what it looked like spring break, the first day we got it, and then I just took a picture this morning. So five weeks later, it looks like this. So yeah, these are our big tomato plants that we'll be selling, so, yeah.
And it takes, once a week?
Yeah, in the fall and the spring, um, once a week. Summer, we meet once a week in the morning, usually like eight to 10, it's just kind of a come and go type thing. Some parents might stay, but most of the time, you know, kids will show up for an hour or so. I don't want to run them off from ever working in a garden by staying out there for two hours, but, um, yeah, and through the summer and we, you know, obviously take a break in the winter when there's not much to do, but.
Well, Phil, that's exactly the question I have, because we have a unique challenge that, that school is not meeting during the fall and the growing season.
Right, when people say, right, when people say every school should have a garden, it's like, but you know, the main growing season is when we're gone. So that's what's great about this greenhouse is it's going to extend the fall and the spring where we can start more stuff. I mean, if it's a mild winter, we may even be able to grow stuff in there all winter, so it really helps there, yeah.
I like, pardon, I don't mean that kind, but I like the study of this early on, it's a planting of a seed for ag sciences in terms of, like, now sciences, so.
Well, it's funny, former students, um, that I see that are in junior high or high school, more often than not, they'll say, hey, remember that plant I bought in fourth grade and I still have it? And they get really excited that they have something that's lasted five years, you know, and that's their memory of, because they still have this like real object in there, yeah, that they have, so, yep.
So any plans to grow for the future or are you just trying to maintain what you've got going on?
Um, maintaining the outdoor garden is always just a lot. Um, I have been talking to Nicole, I found out how important zucchini is and that she can take as much at any time and freeze it for baking, so our new, my new goal is to see how much zucchini we can grow this summer and, um, that's the thing, you know, I let kids take food home, um, but in the summers, we donate it and when we have enough to, like, you saw some of those pictures, I felt like, okay, this is enough that would make a dent and they can add it to, um, you know, what they're serving, but most of the time, it's not enough to feel like it's enough to donate, but we have in the past occasionally when we have a good, a good bump of crops, so. But as far as like selling or doing more of that, I, it's, it's more just, you know.
The purpose of education.
Exactly, yes.
Any other questions?
All right, thanks.
All right, celebrating USD 348 student voices. I have not received since the big project campaign, um, assignments, I've not received anything else to report, and so we'll move on there to item number six, which is the Baldwin Built Employee of the Month announcement.
So last winner for this month, oh, we had several awesome things to say about our winner tonight. Our winner goes above and beyond in their job as a parent educator. They're kind, encouraging, and flexible. They seek out students, they, they know need help, they provide supplementary study materials, workout assignments at home, and even bring in traits to help motivate students. They consistently strive to improve themselves, to become better, to help their students. They're a very professional, who's always fighting for the students and supporting them when they need it without our support. They're a huge heart and they care sometimes too much, but that's because she loves kids. In, in thinking of a quote that best describes this individual, it's worth noting that they go the extra mile for someone special. This is a quote that applies to Terry. In her case, as someone special would be all students. So our winner of the April Baldwin Built Employee of the Month is Terry Brown.
Can you explain that story?
I gotta tell you the story. One of the things that makes Terry so awesome is that she does not want attention brought to themselves, so right now, she's probably wanting me to stop talking so that she can get on, but I'm going to tell you. So whenever we announce the winner, we like to come up with a fun way to let them know that they've been selected by peers, um, for the amazing work that they do. And so I called over to the high school and first I, I called Brent's cell phone, but he screens all his calls every time I call, so he didn't answer. So I called Kelly, uh, happened to her, and she answered and I said, Kelly, what are you doing? She goes, well, I'm in a meeting. And I go, well, can you step out for a minute? And she said, is it important? And I said, yes. I said, all right, so Terry's been nominated and she has been selected as our employee of the month, and you know Kelly. I said, all right, can you help me share the news? And she says, well, sure. And I said, well, you can find where she is in the building, you can go into her building and we can tell her. She goes, well, what if she's with kids? I said, that's even better. And so Kelly, I got Kelly on speakerphone and we share the news with Terry and in front of the entire class, it was so awesome to hear the kids going crazy for her and laugh for her. So, Terry, congratulations, you are amazing what you do. Now you have to wear this and, uh, carry this around and then become even more awesome. So.
In addition of our new employee of the month program that was started this year, Baldwin Education Foundation has generously agreed to be a co-sponsor. So along with this fabulousness, you also receive a $50 cash prize for being the praise of the month, so congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I've got pictures still here. Well, we still do not have basketball, so.
I've texted anything from anybody? No, I texted.
Okay, we can, we can do them next month too. Let's see, what time is it? All right, we can do this in the middle of the, let's go ahead and do this, seven minutes noted. Uh, I move that we amend again the agenda to strike, um, boys' basketball and we'll try to reschedule. Is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, um, all right, moving on to public comment. We have until, uh, seven for anyone to sign up. While I'm waiting for anybody who has already signed up, a reminder of our, uh, public comment policy. A public comment is an opportunity for the board to listen. Do we have anybody signed up? Oh, we don't have anybody signed up. Okay, well, um, okay, well, that will stay open until seven, um, so we'll go ahead and proceed to the financial report. If someone does end up signing in for public comment before seven, we'll honor that and come back to it. Sorry, our flow is, is different tonight, isn't it?
I'm a boat.
Before, before Nate begins, um, there, there are several fees for next year that we're, we just kept them the same from last year moving forward. There are a couple of fees that, uh, we'd like to make some adjustments to and one of them is something that's next year, so, um, Nate, Nate should talk about that. I've listed in your board document, um, what those fees are, so Nate, I'll turn over.
Yeah, so the first one, it would be, uh, the device take home, which would be our Chromebooks, iPads. Um, in the past, or what we've currently been doing is just a straight $50 charge. Um, we're looking to, uh, add that to the free and reduced, uh, items there as well. We feel like that's necessary and, and a good purpose to do so. Uh, so the reduced, uh, would be down to 25 and the free would be down to 15. Along with that, that, as Mark mentioned, the student activity pass fee, uh, currently we're charging a flat fee at both junior high and high school. And we're looking, this, this solves multiple problems, um, for the fact that we have some students that are already in the gymnasium before the event happens and we're not really collecting fees, those types of situations, but we want to really ramp up participation as well, which is key. So we've, uh, with the help of Gary and, and this is happening in other districts as well, uh, we want to, uh, propose a, uh, a straight flat fee for each student at the junior high, high school of $15. Uh, this will allow them to receive a photo ID, um, and that way, those students are just more than welcome to come to those events.
Basically, they would show that, uh, that ID at the gate and that would get them in. One of the things, if you look at our student entry fee, it's $5. So if you attend three games, you've essentially paid, it's paid itself. In terms of what we are currently charging in high school, it's a $50 fee and Gary said we have 51 students dissipating. And the idea is this would help ensure that through those gates, we can still maintain what Gary needs to do, more importantly, get more students to come if the gate fees are the obstacle, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and really the third thing is, is how it's trackable, um, because now how do we, how are we better tracking students? We don't really know how to, so that's an advantage as well.
And it's not cost prohibitive in the, in that sense? It's, it's a big improvement, so.
Yeah, I think it's a win-win all the way around.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess the, if we're looking for a motion to approve, uh, the fees.
Oh, how's it tracking?
Well, I mean, it's, right now, we're, we're, the students that are purchasing the fee.
So just try to move the bias a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, and yeah.
Scanner the games or something?
No, 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 but I think this way, this, this would be just a flat fee, that way we're not having to monitor, hey, did you pay, did you not pay?
It's part of enrollment.
Yeah, it's just part of it when they enroll, yeah, yeah. So it's more streamlined, yeah.
Kelly moved and Chris seconded to approve the 23, 24 fees as presented. All those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand. Aye. Motion carries seven zero. All right, administrative reports. First item, KASB Annual Membership Renewal.
So what you have there is, it's, we've got our, it's our typical annual renewal, not a big deal with KASB, it helps provide the different legal support and services that they, they offer, um, training, um, language for, uh, promotion, or not, language for, to learn policies, um, if that would come out. So I, I just, their, their support that they've provided has been invaluable. If we have a question, we can call, um, with that, the legal side of things, so. I, I would ask that we approve the KASB annual renewal.
I'm a fan. I'll second.
All right, Andy has moved and Susan seconded to approve the KASB Annual Membership Renewal. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Operations update.
All right, as part of our, um, I've been reviewing, uh, the food nutrition services program within our districts going through, um, a variety of areas, looking at ways that we can produce, uh, for what we do, not just in the classroom, but also within other areas of our district. And so one of those areas that we've been looking at is what can we do with regards to culture, participation, student participation, and then, uh, quality. And that's just something that's important in terms of a sustainability program. So as we, we look at what we do internally, um, it's, that's one factor of it. The other side is to, to look at, you know, an outside perspective, what is, what else is out there so that we can, you know, look at what we're doing, are we continuing to do what's, uh, what's, what's best here? So, uh, one of those vendors that, that does provide those, uh, the services for school districts is Office. I've asked Jack Kane to, to kind of look into what we're doing and to provide an outside perspective of what we, of what we've got, so, yeah.
Thank you, glad to be here. So my name's Jack Kane. Uh, I've spent 35 years in Kansas education, so, uh, most of that is, was in town where I grew up, which is near McPherson, uh, Canton and Galva, so I was there 29 years, uh, as a teacher and a coach and a principal and a tech director and a curriculum director and sometimes all those at the same time. I became superintendent of Iola, uh, and that's where I kind of ran into this thing called a food service management company. Uh, and I really didn't know that thing existed until I got there because as superintendents, we know nothing about food service. Of all the education that we have to take to do this job, there is not one second spent on food service and until you sit there and then you realize, oh, there's some stuff that happens here that I don't know anything about and, and it impacts other things. When I was at Iola, uh, first day on the job, I looked at the budget, we subsidized food service $255,000 the year before out of general fund supplemental general, which is supposed to go to educate kids. That's what I thought anyway, when I got the job. Instead, we were not doing that, so I went looking around, just as you guys probably are doing, um, and I found a food service management company. And the first year that we did that, we made $61,000 instead of losing $255,000. And so that set up, um, a lot of good things that happened for our district. One, kids got Chromebooks that they never had before, teachers didn't have laptops, so they've got laptops now. We were able to fund our curriculum. Now, not all this came from the $300,000, but you have to understand that it was, and, you know, um, teachers got, the four years I was there, teachers were able to get 14% raise over those four years. So, um, I'm pretty proud of that fact and that's why I guess I'm here. I saw how it helped our kids and so I'm now retired, but I worked for OPA, so. So, has anybody ever heard of OPA? Okay, because you're, you're surrounded by some OPA schools, so, um, I'm just curious if that was something that you'd heard of. So, we're family owned, we've been around for 44 years, so the home office is in Chesterfield, Missouri. We specialize, we do home style baking, cooking, uh, all that stuff, uh, and we now are in eight states, which I'll show you here in a minute. Yeah, so, um, when OPA came to Iola, I think we were number 14 in Kansas. Uh, that was 2014, 15. So now we're up to 66. We've had substantial growth in not only Kansas, but Oklahoma, Arkansas, Nebraska, all those places, so, uh, we're in about 300 school districts now, so, all over the Midwest. And there's the Kansas cluster. So around you, you have Ottawa, Perry, LaCompton, Silver Lake, Santa Fe Trail, Baser, Linwood, Turner, Bonner, a number, number of those schools around here, so. So the question becomes, so what, why would you want to look at a food service management company? What are some of the things that they can do that maybe, um, your self-operation can't do? And I would stress, one, first of all, it isn't that anybody's done anything wrong. What, what this, how this works is we just have a What this, how this works is, we just have a tremendous amount of resources that your school district probably doesn't have. And how this model works primarily is, number one, purchasing power. The bottom line is, we can purchase food cheaper than you can, because we are purchasing for 300 school districts. We make our deals directly with Tyson. We don't purchase through FNA or EVCO or whatever. We make the deal with Tyson, then we hire a purveyor to deliver the food. And so, because we're serving so many of those meals, we get tremendous price breaks. So how that translates to helping school districts is, the money that's saved saves you money. You get more choices, quality for less money. We make a little bit of money. We are a for-profit company, but that's where it comes from. It comes from the savings of food. It isn't about labor. It isn't about those kinds of things. That's how, that's how the model works. So the other thing that happens is, most school districts, we increase participation. We make sure you're fully compliant, because that's a long board meeting if we don't. If you've got to send money back, I don't want to be part of that one. So we do all the menu developing. Inventory control's a big deal to us. We do inventory every week. That's how we keep costs down. So we assist with all your audits. KSD loves to audit an OPA school, because production records are perfect, all that stuff, and you can ask them. And we manage the program, so driving participation, branding, those kinds of things, so. And we do whatever in terms of programs that you want to provide. We don't say no. I'll give you an example. I was at Iola. We have a, at Iola, 67% pre-reduced was our number, okay? Quite a bit of poverty there. If I had come in and asked our cook staff, hey, I got an idea. We're going to do summer meals. We're going to start day after Memorial Day, and we're going to go all the way through the first week of August through the county fair, and we're going to serve meals at the county fair, because they're free. What do you guys say? They would have said, we ain't going to, we're not going to do that. In the end, what I did is, I took an old bus, and after 25 years, he can't haul kids in, right? So we took the seats out, turned them around, made RV dinettes in there, had about eight of them, painted it white, painted vegetables and fruit on it, and it was called MARV, our Meals and Reading Vehicle. And so what we did in the summer, we drove that bus around to underserved parts of our community, Gas, La Harve, you know, couldn't get there, because when you, we had a static site, never any kids could get there. So those kinds of things, OPA was on board for. And they said, oh, yeah, let's do that. And so we served about 80 meals a day out of that bus. So just an example of, we're going to work with any, whatever you want to do, we're going to find a way to make it happen. I had brought some friends. This is Kay, David Bus. Now, Kay's got an interesting story. She was a director at a school that didn't have OPA, that superintendent said, hey, I think I want to bring in OPA. And Kay said...
What?
So she's got an interesting story. She's going to talk about the menu and some of those things, and I'm sure she'll give you more of that story.
Now, my superintendent that I had at the time likes to tease me now and say, yeah, all the years as superintendent I was, selling Kay that food service program was the hardest thing I had to do, because I have been the director at my school for 20 years. And we took pride in what we did. I had ladies that had worked in those kitchens for 30 years, were on their grandkids' grandkids' sets of children, and we were tired, and we thought we were doing a good job. And we were doing a good job, but we were not financially doing a good job, which wasn't anything against us. It was food prices, it was labor costs. It was a lot of things that we didn't have any control over. So once I got convinced that I should at least look at this program, we did. And once I sat down with my staff and we talked about, you know, everything they wanted to know right away was, how is it going to affect me? How's it going to affect me? Well, it wasn't going to affect us that much. We kept our hours, we kept our salaries, all that kind of stuff. And I said, well, let's look at it. How's it going to affect the kids? And when we took that I factor out of it and thought about the students, we were going to be able to save some money, get some new equipment, offer some work choices, we were going to be able to better our program for our kids. And that's what we were there for, is for the kids. The first day that we opened up, that we had OPA there, we had, instead of one choice for lunch and one choice for breakfast, we had three choices for lunch, three choices for breakfast, and we had an a la carte and a salad bar. And the kids walked in, and their eyes were huge. They thought, they kept saying, this is just like a food court. This is like the mall. This is, and so when you saw that excitement out on their faces, any struggle or any change that we had to make as the adults to get that program in there was worth it, was all worth it, so. And I wasn't a superintendent in Kansas, but I did graduate from PAO, so, but don't hold that against me. These are just some of the choices of the things that we serve daily. Our fresh markets is our main entrees that we serve every day. And our company is not a cookie cutter company. We don't say, okay, our company will offer eight choices, 10 choices. We're going to come in and drop that, and your staffs lap and say, okay, now make it work. This is a partnership between OPA and the school district. We come in, we look at your equipment, we look at how many staff you have, the size of your kitchens, and then we sit down with them and we tailor what will work in your kitchens. But as I go through here, I'm going to be telling you about a lot of the things we offer, and those are just things that if they work in your school district, that's fantastic. We want to do them. Like I said, the fresh markets are our main entrees. We try to do at least 65% of all our meals, scratch cooking. You can't get rid of corn dogs. You can't get rid of hamburgers. We do have pizza, but we make it from scratch. So we also offer grab-and-go meals. Those are meals that are already completely reimbursable. They're boxed up in a clear container. They're for the kids that if they have, they need to go talk to a teacher or something over their lunch, or they need to go to the library or something, they can go grab that out of the cabinet, go to the front of the line, check out, and take that whole meal with them. And it is completely reimbursable. They don't have to add anything to it. So it makes it work real good for the kids that are in a hurry to get their lunch. We have salad bars. We do individual salads. If you don't have space for a salad bar, we'll do individual salads, Cobb salads, chicken fiesta salads. We like to, if you have room in your kitchens, to do world foods, where every day, there's a different kind of ethnic food that's being served, where kids can learn about, you know, not just the all-American food. And we set these bars up to where, say it's a posse bar, you might have Alfredo sauce, marinara sauce. You might have ground beef, ground pork. You might have curly noodles, spaghetti noodles. They pick, they build their meal together with that. So they get a choice. We have found out that by offering choices and by giving kids a chance to pick what they eat, they eat it and still dump it in the trash. Back in the old days, when we put one choice on their plate, they got the entree, they got the vegetable, they had to have the fruit, they'd have it all. We gave them the tray, they would eat one thing off of it and dump the rest of it. This sets up a model to where they choose it. Most generally, they eat it. We do try to do samplings, so that they know ahead of time if it's something new and they don't know what it is. We will give out, we're just like Costco and Sam's. We give out the little sampling, so that they get a taste of it before we serve it as a main entree, so they know what it is. We usually have, well, we always have a gulp, what we call a gulp station. We have drinks for kids that they don't like milk, so we have water dispensers. The upper grades can get limited tea. Our mini mart is our a la carte that we like to offer. We like to offer the individual a la carte deals, or we'll, a lot of times, say, you know, if you pick a hamburger and you put your vegetable with it and a fruit with it, you've got a reimbursable meal, so they can build a reimbursable meal from the a la carte. Breakfast foods, favorite day of the week, every Friday, biscuits and gravy. It's my favorite, anyway. Same thing with that. We try to introduce a lot of new things to the kids. If you've got the space, we like to do made-to-order omelets. We like to set up a yogurt bar, where they get a strawberry yogurt, a vanilla yogurt, and then there's all kinds of toppings for them to put on, on top of it. So it's all about choices. We have a corporate chef, and he has gone in, and a lot of our recipes, he's made a video about. So if it's something that, it's a new recipe for someone, you can not only read the recipe, but you can watch his video, and he'll show you how to make it. So I'm a person that, I can read it, but I like to see it. I want to see the it. I don't read the directions when I put something together. I put it together, and then if I can't get it right, then I look at the directions. I'm a visual person. I like to see it. So he's done a good job at making our videos to help, to help train our staff. And he also will come to your school, work with your cooks. I've learned a million tips from him that make things work. You've heard the expression, work smarter, not harder? He's really good at helping people learn those tricks to the trade. Second chance breakfast, that we have found out that a lot of those high schoolers, they like to slide in there at the last minute, they want to visit with their friends, they don't take time for breakfast. Bonner Springs School District up the road here, nice-sized high school, I think they've got about 700 kids. They had about 150 kids eating breakfast. So the director says, what can we do at breakfast? I need to work on breakfast. So we tried the second chance breakfast. They took breakfast carts, or rolling tables, or whatever they could work off of, and went around to different areas of the high school between first and second hour, and served a second chance breakfast. Their breakfast increased from 150 to between 400 and 500 kids eating breakfast. So the kids would, could run by, it was in a sack. They did it two different ways. They could pick up a sack that had a complete reimbursable breakfast in it, everything in it was disposable. Most of them hadn't eaten by the time they got to their next class. We ordered some extra trash cans, and they dropped all their trash in before they went into class. We also tried where they picked up a sack, just because we wanted to try to offer versus serve and let them choose, and then they would walk by the table and put in their sack what they wanted to eat for breakfast. So both ways worked really well. If you've got the staff to run the point-of-sale at several places, it goes very, very fast, eight minutes, and the kids were to their next class. We use a menu system called Nutrislice. It's a web-based. It is something that you can look at the menu on any device, on your phone, your Apple Watch, your computer, your iPad, you can pull up, pull up the menu for any day. It also, on that, you can hold your cursor over it, it will give you all the nutritional information about that meal. It has descriptions of what it is, shows a picture of what it is. It's great for elementary kids, because you'll say, oh, we're having a calzone today. Well, what's a calzone? Teacher can turn the computer around, put a cursor on it, and a picture of it comes up, and they go, oh, yeah, they have those at the pizza place, so they know what they're getting. The nurses love it, because it has a filter on it for any allergies. They can put on their, they want to look at the menu, and they'll plug in, say, peanut allergies. It'll pull the menu up, and it'll have everything on the menu that has, has anything to do with, or made in the same factory as peanuts, it'll cross it off. So it makes it so easy. The nurse can, nurses can do carb counts on it. Makes their job a lot easier. It's in, what did we say the other day, Neil? 26 languages?
You can do as many as you want. I was the director in the end over, and so I went and talked to the English special language teachers, and said, what language do you want? And we gave them 28 that they needed, and so it would translate to any language that any student in this department, so.
So it's really, really handy if, especially if you have schools that have a lot of Hispanic kids in it. The kids probably speak English, but we ran into a lot of their parents didn't, so they could read the menu and know what the kids were getting. And it also came with a print option, for people that still want to put it on the refrigerator. This is what our branding looks like, so when we come into a new school, this will direct kids to what we're serving, where it's at, and makes it a lot easier to find their way around and stuff, so. We, this is what our fresh fruit and vegetable bars look like. We have that for the kids. They'll go through and get their main entree, get their hot vegetables, and then they can go to this bar that's going to have five to six different options of fruits and vegetables, and they can pick their own out of that. And it, I've had people say, well, you know, our elementary kids, they can't do that. Yeah, they can, and they're a lot neater than the high school kids. But this is a great feature, and it, we try to keep a lot of fresh fruits on there and seasonal fruits, so it's another way to give them choices.
The other thing, too, about the fresh fruit and vegetable bars, KSD will let kids go back as often as they can. I mean, you know, there's no limit. The only thing you have to be careful of is kids. I mean, we've had high school kids take all the kiwi fruit, you know, and so you kind of have to watch that. But it's one of those ways that the healthy, hungry, free kids act. You know, the complaint there is, you don't get enough food. This, they can go back and get as much fresh fruit and vegetables as they can.
We always try to teach them when we first bring these bars in, take what you want, but eat what you take. So, and it, it all averages out, and really, it's a highlight that they really do enjoy. This just gives you some samplings of the different companies that we work with and the places that we deal directly with to order our food. Farm to school. I love the gardens. I love the vegetable, the chili party. That is fantastic. We promote that 150%. I, I'm the person now that will help write grants to get your seeds, your plant, any equipment that you need to do this. If you don't have a greenhouse, I'll help you write a grant where we can get a greenhouse. And we try to, when we go in, survey the area to see if there's any local people that we can order from. We order apples from South Baldwin Farm. He's a great guy to work with. We get our apples there, especially in October, because we have what you call Apple Crunch Day, where we promote apples like crazy, and he's been a great asset to us to work with. We like to work with the schools to have the tower gardens, anything we can to teach kids where their food comes from. Because a lot of them, and especially our schools around the city, we have committee meetings with, with the kids to see what they like to eat, and try to teach them about new things to eat and healthy ways to eat. And you'll ask them, I took plums into one of the meeting one time, and I asked the kids, how many kids knew what it was? They didn't know what a plum was. So not only did they not know different fruits and vegetables... So not only did they not know different fruits and vegetables outside of their realm, they don't know how they get it, because you ask them where it comes from and they'll say, "The grocery store." Well, no, it comes from a seed, you plant. So we like to encourage that type of learning with it. And by doing the farm to school, that is a great, great program. And we like to get our FFA kids involved with working with those smaller kids too. This again is, is the things that we've partnered with. Something else I work with is the beef to plate. Getting either local beef donated or getting it set up with local producers and processing plants to where we can buy it local, instead of coming on a vendor's truck from who knows where, I've been on there for how long. We want to bring it right to the farm here. It not only, there again, teaches your kids where it comes from, it involves local people that that's what they do for a living. We get them involved in, we've taken kids out to their farm to tour, so they know where it comes from. It's a great program and the kids are benefiting from it by getting fresh beef. These are just additional things that we can add in. We have schools that do breakfast in the lunchroom, cafeteria, we have schools that do breakfast in the classroom. We do boxed lunches for field trips, we do boxed lunches for sports trips. Basically, anything that you or the school district would need food-wise, we want to be involved in it. If you have a snack program, if you have the fresh fruit and vegetable program, if your school qualifies for it, we want to be involved with helping you order those and get the best product you can to let your kids sample. The Child and Adult Care Food Program, or CACFP, that's a project I'm working on right now for next year, is to get all of our schools that qualify for that to, to be able to feed a supper program to. It irritates me when I hear people talk about, "Oh, our kids are so obese, they're obese." Well, yes, we do have some are, but we have kids that don't eat anything but what they get at school. And if we can feed them breakfast, lunch, a snack, and supper, then we've done our job. Catering. This is where we like to have fun, because we don't have to follow those lovely USDA guidelines. We can show off. So anything that has to do with catering, whether it be teachers, lunches on professional day, banquets, staff development days, things for meetings, cookies, fruit and vegetable trays for meetings. At my school, when, when OPA first came in, the Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary Club, you know, we invited everybody, "Come and have lunch with us, see the new program, come and have lunch with us." Soon as I did, they kept going, "Could you do our luncheon? Could you do our luncheon?" We did their luncheons, and we could do it a lot more economically than ordering from a restaurant around town. And they got to help promote our, our program at school. So anything that has to do with catering, we'd love to do.
So let me talk about the bid process briefly here. So the bid process is highly regulated by KSD. So you have to fill out an RFP, submit it, they have to look it over first, it has to be out 45 days, and then it is sent to everybody on the vendor list that is registered with the state of Kansas. There are about 17 or 18 companies. You will not get 17 or 18 proposals back, because on those are colleges, Juco's, state hospitals, everybody that does that kind of work with the state of Kansas, so. Okay, come on now, there we go. We usually start with a feasibility study, which we've done here with part. And as I said, the RFP in the bid is, you get that from KSD, you have to call and request it. In that RFP, you'll talk, you'll determine what kind of employee model that you want to get bids for. And there are three main ones, maybe an offshoot with a fourth one, and I'll go over those here in a second, because that part is pretty important. This is a five-year fixed-price contract. Let me say that again. It is a five-year fixed-price contract. So you only pay for what, the meals. So if there is waste that happens, we make too much stuff, you don't pay for that, that's on us. You're only paying for the meals that are served to kids. So your first thing is going, "Oh, five years, are we locked in for five years?" No, there is every, you renew every year, okay? And the only way that we can raise your price is through, it's the February Consumer Right, Consumer Price Index Food Away From Home number, okay? This year, it was 8.4%. Had a pretty tough year, you know, the inflation. So how that works is your prices will go up 8.4%, your reimbursement rates will also at least go up by 8.4%. This is a mechanism to keep the contract neutral. So year after year, so otherwise, I'm sure if we had our choice, we probably wouldn't pick a five-year fixed-price contract. You know, the state did that for us. But that, that's the only incentive to make this work, because otherwise, we'd set a price for the first year, and by year five, you know, we wouldn't be in business anymore. So that's a way to keep the contract neutral, so I want to make sure you understand that. So, and I already talked about, you have to renew annually. You can get out in 90 days, that's in the contract. You own all the equipment, you don't have to get rid of any equipment, it's not like going to a bus contract where you sell all your buses and then if it doesn't work, you want to buy buses again, and sometimes it gets caught. So you maintain all your equipment and all that stuff, so. Okay, so employee models. You get to choose the employee model, and there are three flavors here. One, district retains all the employees except the director. The only person that has to be an employee of, of the food service management company is the director, and that's not our rule, that's KSD's rule, okay? Otherwise, you can keep all the employees. However you want to do that, doesn't matter, okay? Or you can move all the employees over to the food service management company. Say, "Okay, that's the one we're going to do, all employees are going to move over to, to the company, we're not going to have any more employees." Or the third one is a transition model, and employees can move over to the food service management company over time, and you get to decide how that works, okay? And I'll get to that here in a second. First of all, why transition? It is probably the most popular employee model that we have, because, first of all, it's financial friendly, okay? So I'm, essentially, you pay for the labor either way, it doesn't matter. You keep the employees, you're paying for the labor. You move them all over to us, it still worked into the bid, you're paying for the labor, okay? And it's a wash for us, we don't want to make any money on labor, we don't want to lose any money on labor. But when you transition employees, what happens is usually the benefits, because we're spreading out over a lot of employees, are cheaper than your benefits, and you end up, financially it's better for the district to transition employees. It's better for you on the financial side. The other thing that happens is nobody gets anything taken away. So, because once they move to OPA, they're not, they're not a state employee anymore. So they're, they're in any capers. Now, if you've got people on capers tier one, I would say, "Keep them, please," okay? If you've got people on capers tier three, they may want to, you may want to talk to us, because our 401K is better than capers tier three, because capers tier three is awful. It just is, so. But the thing about what the district can do, it gives you some flexibility, so you can, go ahead.
Just a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
So can you say that part again? Is that, in the transition model, is any of that their decision, or we make that decision on?
That's what I'm going to tell you right now.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so you get to decide, because it's up to the board, right? So you can transition through attrition, and simply say, "Okay, anybody that quits or retires when we hire back, then that position moves over to the food service management company," okay? Or you can give the employees a choice, and there are several districts that do that. They meet with them and say, "Look, you know, who's on capers tier one?" "Okay, stay there." "Capers tier three, here." I'll be honest, our, probably our health insurance isn't as good as most school districts' health insurance, so if there's some health issues and they like your insurance, they stay with the district. If they've got a spouse that has health insurance from some other company, and they're, again, they're on capers tier three, might want to talk to us, because here's the other thing, we will pay unemployment compensation for Christmas break, spring break, and summers. You have to work for us five quarters, you know, a year and a quarter, but otherwise, we'll pay unemployment, you won't. So, so there's a number of things like that that, you know, the folks might want to think through, you know, and see what's best for them. The other thing that boards can do is you can designate who's going where. Everybody on capers tier one's with us, everybody else is going over there, and you can just say that. So you, you have all the options of what you want to do with that. But transition is relatively new. We sat at KSD and worked it out with Dale Dennis, and, and that was about six years ago. So it's been, before that, it was just, either stay or you go, and, and that would get a little, that's tough sometimes, so. Okay, the other thing that happens in a transition model is, so what happens? So we have a price, right? I tell you, I already told you, you're paying for the labor no matter what, right? So you start out, everybody's with the district. Over time, let's say the first year, three people come over to the food service management company. So how do we adjust that price then? Well, in the contract, there's a transition fee. So for every full-time FTE, eight hours, there is a price that will be added to your lunch and breakfast, okay? It's simply a math problem. In El Dorado, the transition fee is six cents for a full-time FTE employee to move over to OPA. In Buckland, Kansas, it's 40 cents. It's real easy, why? Because El Dorado has a lot more participation than what Buckland does, okay? Buckland's about 200 kids and El Dorado's 22, whatever, 23. So how many meals do you have to serve to pay for? Because both cooks are making the same, right, the transition? They're both making $14 an hour. How much, how much do we have to generate to pay for that labor? And so that's what the transition fee does, okay? Sometimes I'll get superintendents say, "Well, I talked the bill down the road and, and I'm paying 25 cents and he's paying, you know, seven or 35, whatever it is, you know, because people talk." I say, "Okay, let me explain," you know, I mean, I don't even know if KSD quite understands how that works very well with this. Okay, you also control all these other things, so you still get to set your student meal prices, whatever you want to set your student meal prices at, that's no problem. You maintain control of all the revenue streams. We'll do cashiering if you want us to, okay? That can be part, that's part of the checkbox in the RFP. If you want all the employees to go here and the cashiering, or there's an option where you keep the cashier. So you approve all the new hires, including directors, so you guys, we're not, you know, if we got to hire somebody, we're not going to some other labor market, you know, we're going to hire people here, you know these people, so we want to make sure that we put those folks in front of you and, and get your approval. You set your policies and procedures, we follow those, whatever your point-of-sale software is, we use that tool. We also provide a support team, so we'll be here week, two weeks before school starts?
At least two weeks.
Training, cooks, make sure, getting ready, being prepped. As soon, as soon as, if you would approve for us to be your food service management company, we'd hire a director right away and we'd start training. We have a leadership conference in the summer, every summer, that they would be required to go to, and they get a lot of intense training there too. Let's see, we do an orientation meeting with, obviously with your cook staff, we'd answer all questions, we'll do that at any time during this process. If you want us to meet with your cooks tomorrow, we would sit down and talk to them about this process, if you want to do it later on, whatever, whatever is appropriate. And the transition team will be onsite until everybody's comfortable. So we're, again, we have 66 district, or school districts in the state. We have a lot of support, we have a lot of folks like Neil here that support our districts. If you look at other food service management companies in Kansas, I think there are 73 school districts that have food service management companies. We have 66 of them. We have a 98% retention rate. So not very many people, once, once they come onboard, they stay. In your packet there, there's a list of school districts there, you can call any one of them you want, doesn't matter to me, and ask them about OPA. I've talked a lot. Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
So the food preparation is onsite, similar to the way it is today?
Absolutely.
It's not, it's not coming over prepared or?
No, 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 no. Like I said, she, 65% is scratch cooking. No, we'll, and we do our, we're on a show, a video, so the roast stuff, I mean, our, our-
Pork roast.
Pork roast stuff. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't come in a bag where you just, you know, boil it or something. Yeah, no. That's, that's the, that's the thing. Now, again, do we still have kin-friendly items? We do. We have some heat and eat, because that's how kids eat now, unfortunately. We have the greatest meatloaf ever, and there are some schools that kids won't eat it because they don't, I don't know if they don't have meatloaf anymore, I don't know. But it is really good.
Jack, can I ask?
Yes, sure, absolutely.
I don't mean this to be a loaded question, but-
Nope.
For you, it's important to make sure that you get the counts right for, from a waste perspective, so you're not eating. What happens, what happens in that time where, for whatever reason, there's been a miscalculation or students change their mind and they come through, and they're, the component for the reimbursable meal for the main entree line is not there? What, what is this, I thought I heard you say that, that you create that reimbursable meal. Can you talk about that a little bit more? Is that, is that pay-through-all cart? Is that a reimbursable meal? What does that, what does that look like?
So, I'll make sure you understand, so let's say that, like, we have multiple choices, right? So let's say today we have cheeseburger and hot dog, just to make it simple. And we try to get a count from all students in all buildings whenever possible. So let's say in elementary school, in the morning, they'll have the menu pulled up and say, "Who wants hot dog, 10 kids? Who wants hamburger, 12 kids?" Right? So now the kitchen gets the order, you know, all the orders, and we have 300 cheeseburgers and 100 hot dogs. We make a buffer, right? So we're going to produce, let's say, 315 and 110 or something, just a little buffer to make sure. Does it ever happen where, what the students tell us in the morning, right, and then they come to the afternoon, and every kid wants a cheeseburger, and we get all these 100 hot dogs sitting there? It happens, right, because kids are kids, right? But we, we're always going to have something to serve, right, or be able to make something else. And we'll have, make a different entree, have another entree that we can make for them. Our goal, you know, like I said, I've got three daughters, right, in schools, and our goal is to have what they want all the time. We have different systems, we work with different schools, where we'll do- We have different systems, we work with different schools where we'll do, like, in each classroom, we'll have like a card and say, okay, this many kids took cheeseburgers, this many took hot dog when they locked down. We know how many kids are coming and what they had, we do armbands, we do all these different things. But our goal is to always have what they ordered, but no matter what, we're gonna have something to serve. Like, I like to say, never out of a choice, but never out of food, right? We're always gonna have something.
I think what you were asking, though, is what do you do if that kid went through the line?
Yeah.
And on our, our check and balance system, how do you know that the kid that went through the line and already, and already comes up on their point of sale, they don't eat that meal? Is that, is that kind of what you?
Right, yeah. Essentially, it's how are we able to make sure that they, that we're not placing a family in a situation where they're, the kid's getting, going through all the cart for their meal versus getting their main entree? And you've answered it for me.
Sure, well, that, yeah. And their systems will play depending on your point of sale, where they'll have, if you ring in an entree, then they show second entree, like, this is the second time they got an entree. Or, like I said, under some point-of-sale systems, they'll say, cannot present all the cart and they have to make a meal. There's different sets that we can work with.
Right, and I'm so sorry for taking that, because that made me think of another question here. So in terms of local control for point of sale, who determines the point of sale in terms of, are all the cart items able to go towards the student lunch account or are those cash only? Is that local control?
Local control.
Or the board to decide?
Yep, we have, we have a number of school districts that do cash. We have a number of school districts that put it on their lunch count. We have a number of school districts that have a punch card. You know, you'll buy a ten-dollar punch card for all the cart or something. So there, the thing about, what's interesting about OPA is you have all these school districts in all these states, right? There isn't an issue that hasn't come up somewhere else, and there are usually multiple solutions for, that, and you kind of talk about it and say, okay, which one fits us best, our culture, you know, those kind of things. But there's usually, somebody's come across the same thing and have found solutions to make it work.
And we have a check and balance system every day. Normally, the kitchen manager, she's gonna know how many prepared, she's gonna know how many's left over. They're gonna balance that with the cashier. Those two will balance every day. The cashier will say, I had this many meals, kitchen manager, I have this many meals. Hopefully, when the kitchen or the cashier is working, I always kept a notepad beside me and if there was any change or any situation like what you said, I'd jot it down and we'd adjust it. But the, the point of sale is what we go by.
I guess, like, my biggest concern there is making sure that the revenue isn't done on the back of all cart.
Right, right.
With your, your participation, so that the well-rounded meal, if you will.
We have a lot of school districts.
Right.
That set their rule as to you have to go through and get a reimbursable meal, reimbursable meal first, and then after you've eaten that, if you're still hungry, you can go back and buy all the cart. So that's all set up by you.
And that's all local control, right? So when I was in Iola, again, I was sixty-seven percent free and reduced, right? I didn't want a lot of all-a-cart, because I wanted reimbursable meals. So, but first, we shrunk that all-a-cart down a little bit, so we didn't, we didn't sell as much all-a-cart. That forced more reimbursable meals. I did that for a reason. So, but Andover, Andover, Kansas, kind of one of, a unique place, right? I think free and reduced is seven? I don't know. They do almost all all-a-cart. Okay, they have, the all-a-cart sales probably are more than the reimbursable meals, does that maybe? Well, not only at the town, Elmo, at high school for sure, though, but.
We bring all-a-cart lists to the superintendent, to whoever we're, is that like our liaison that we're working with? And the district has to approve it before we can sell. If you want more or less, or if you just want prepackaged items, or if you want some homemade items, you, you also have a say in that.
Did you have a question?
Yeah. You've done this a bit, you can tell, Stu. So I'm usually, when there's any kind of outsourcing mentioned, I'm usually here banging the table about local jobs and so on. And you're saying there's no strategy in that, except that.
No, no.
They won't be able to necessarily make things the way they've been making them.
There may be some changes, yes, absolutely, yeah. But if they got a better idea than what, than how we do it, the better idea wins. So it's, it's not a.
And a lot of them are standardized recipes that are USDA that we all follow.
Yep.
I mean, there's, we, like you was talking about our meatloaf, we have a little bit of meatloaf. We have recipes about, it meets all the guidelines, but we add green peppers and, you know, onions and we, we have our own, but all of them have to meet those standards.
The only thing that's different sometimes, so the concerns that we get are, okay, well, we don't have enough people to make what we're doing now. How are we gonna make three choices and this and that and whatever? And that's where the changes come in. So it's possible, we've done it in every school district that we've ever been in, and we get the same concern in every school district that we've come in. How are we gonna do this? And.
I think what a lot of people would agree, and you've already addressed it, is they're gonna bring in more premium things than they could do staff and so on, and your model is not that.
Nope.
There are other models like that, right? I mean, that's just not our model, right? So ours is much more the cook from scratch. You know, I'm, I like to cook, right? And my challenge now when I hire people is all they have is an air fryer and a microwave, right? They don't know how to cook, right? So I have to teach them to cook. I've been in restaurants for whatever, thirty years, you know? So, yeah, we try, we want to have cooking going on in the schools. And then same thing, we'll bring in like the fax classes and work with them and show them how we make food or do like nutritional education classes. And so we want to teach, you know, farmer's school and then also just how to make the food, yeah.
How does, that answers some of my questions, employee impact. In terms of parents paying the bills impact, how does, do you have any kind of information about how this has impacted meal pricing and affordability for families?
Use.
I know we're a part of that.
Yep.
That's the part I'm trying to get my mind around. Hey, we're offering all this, but it costs this much meal.
Right.
That's, that's the part I'm not.
I guess what I'm hearing, if I'm not wrong, is it's gonna cost less because.
You're very, you're very good. Yes, correct, yeah. In many cases, it, now, every school district's a little bit different, but if we couldn't, if we couldn't provide more choices, really good quality, and do it for less money, we wouldn't have gained sixty-six school districts in Kansas.
So my other question related to that is that also has to then be coupled with increasing participation. I mean, that is inherent to making this work and controlling prices.
I.
So do you have an average increased participation amount, like, overall?
So if we come into a district that has participation of seventy percent at lunch, we probably couldn't increase that by twenty. Okay? I mean, we're probably looking at five to ten, you know? And I'd be conservative and say, if we get seventy-five, which is where, as a company, we want lunch to be, we can do that. If we're sitting at fifty, I would say, for sure, we could get sixty-five. You know, now, can I guarantee that? No, I can't. But, I mean, that's been our history. So that's been the history of that, absolutely. So the only time that we struggle is when schools, high schools, have an open lunch. It's hard to break that barrier of, you know, sometimes I don't, you could have five food trucks out in the parking lot and they're still gonna go off campus somewhere because they can. So, you know, there's some barriers like that that we can't get over, just because, you know, it's not the cool thing to do, no.
And we try to involve the kids.
Yes.
In the menus and what we're serving by the sampling. As I mentioned, we have these nutritional advisory committees that we do every grade and pull so many kids in. And they fight to be on the little committees because we usually always have food and we do samplings there. But we go over the menu, we ask them what they like, what they don't like, because it doesn't benefit any of us if we're fixing stuff they don't like, you know? And some areas are different. Like you mentioned, the meatloaf. We've got some schools that they would eat the meatloaf over anything, and then we've got some schools that don't like it at all. So we try to get a feel of what the students like and what they want to see on the menu. We've had students say, well, my mom makes a lasagna that is just to die for. And so we'll say, okay, bring their mom's recipe in, we'll run it through the nutritional analysis. If it works and we can do it, we'll put it on the menu. You know, we're always looking for new ideas that they, that they want us to try or want us to do, because if, we want to feed them as nutritionally as we can, as, from scratch as much as we can, and a healthy balance between those hamburgers and corn dogs and things like that, because we want them to eat.
Any other questions?
Regarding, just a little more specific, regarding the local districts, they're based on Ottawa and all of the, 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 and. If I asked them, would they all say, yes, we made money, we saved money, transition?
Oh, in the transition, in the transition model?
No, I mean.
Or just, just you do that?
Moving from locally.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, yeah, from, from the beginning of their contract to now, I think we saved them all money. Yes, yeah. Yeah.
Just a curiosity question on the back of my mind, reading your stuff, your website. What does?
Oh, that's a good, that's a good question. I don't know why, I usually start with that, but, so it's not an acronym, it's Greek, it's the OPA, throw the, celebration of food, throw the glass in the fireplace and raise your hand and yell OPA. So celebration of food, so.
Where's Chesterfield?
What's that?
Where's Chesterfield?
Chesterfield is just outside, it's this side of St. Louis, south, south and west, so.
Is the feasibility study that was included, is that after you've entered into the contract? Or is that something?
No, that's something that we've, we've already looked at.
So where we are here, as I've been doing this analysis and wrapping it up, I'll tell you, this is one of the final steps.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Feasibility study-wise, as part of the analysis that Jack sent, we currently have, pulling it up here, forty-three percent of our students through all building, across all buildings, spending in lunch. I want to make sure I get the.
And the feasibility.
Forty-two percent, I'm sorry, with lunch there. And then thirteen percent participating in breakfast. There's that, that's our current practice there. And so as we're looking at trying to increase participation, you know, we're talking about adding more food and vegetable options. We've got a couple of, we've got, I see this as two decisions for you. Board can direct us to, you know, thank OPA for their time and their, and their study on what we've got. Funding rise right now financially, we are on the positive side of things. Is that because of the free meals for two years? Is it because, based on the forty-two participation percentage for meals and eighteen for the breakfast? Is that because all-a-cart, the steering was through?
Did you guys get food supply chain money, too?
Do we get food supply chain money, Paul?
I'm not a fan of it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So is it a result from that? Is that, is that sustainable over time? You know, it's, our staff works really hard. I mean, now, I'm gonna be honest with you, this is, this is very personal. They are not happy with me at all for looking into this. They work hard and they want to do their best. And so we can say, you know what, we've paid you for the feedback you've given us, the information here kind of points us in a direction of where we can go. Or we could look at this as, you know what, we need more time, more information, so direct Nate and I to go through the bid process to see where that takes us. I mean, we would have forty-five days at that point to make the decision, one direction or another. The timeline would be short, because if the contract itself would begin July one, if option two is working out, so.
And it's just like any other proposal? It's not, it's not a sealed bid like you would do other things? It's a little bit different, but you can still reject all proposals and keep doing what you're doing?
One of the best things you could do is get a group of students, some of the school board members, teachers, some of the food service staff, go eat lunch in Ottawa. Jody runs a great program there, let them see it firsthand, taste it. Are any of you that want to go visit?
As part of that, the free bid piece, I would ask that if that's what we're doing, give our food service department an opportunity to also gather their input, their perspective, and be able to, on the same plane, to be able to show what they got in response to this. Because I know that they want to see participation increase, I know that they care about the kids, and the point that was made, whether it's this direction or that. They want the kids, they do, they do this for the kids. So, yes.
That's inspiring a thought or a question. Do you have data or numbers on how many or what percentage of the staff that you are retaining when you, when you have districts transitioning to your core area? I mean, is that?
Yeah, I don't have the stats off the top of my head. I would say a lot of it depends, like Jack said, on tenure, right? So, you know, something Jack was talking about with tier ones, a lot of times, if they're tier one and they're eligible for their capers, they'll retire from the district and they come onboard with OPA, right? Those are also, things are eligible as well. But I would say, like, El Dorado's a school district, we start transitioning over. El Dorado, the, all the kitchen managers and file of the staff, well, I've been with that district now ten years, they're still there, right? So it really just depends a lot of times on the staff and where they live and other options. But in general, you know, we're talking about the staff, is the work different? Yeah, it's different. It's a different recipe, it's a different procedure and those types of things, but we're still feeding the same kids, right? And so I tell the districts, I don't grow a lot of mushrooms, right? The only way I can feed kids is with the staff you have, right? So our, inherently, I'm trying to train them, coax them up and keep them, because that's how we feed the kids, right? So, yeah.
And the school district I came from, it's been fifteen years since, sixteen years since I worked there, there are still some of the original people that were there when we switched over. There are some that have retired along the way, but they, we've still got some original, original people.
And you mentioned July one being the timeline, is that always consistent, July one of every year? And is there, there's not a mid-year option, there's not a January?
Actually, there is. You have to, you have to, KSD has to sign off on that. We've opened districts in October before, back Linden, down, down the road here somewhere, because last year we opened in October, because they got a little late start and didn't get everything really done to do a, an August, you know, start school on.
They started in January?
They started, actually, we started October first.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, which was a little bit different, but it worked out okay. But, yeah, there are some options. I would communicate with KSD on that, on what you wanted to do if you chose something like that. But typically, these contracts, food service management contracts, have a July one date where they start, so.
Mark, are we currently supplementing the food budget at all with, from general plan?
No.
Or not because of the federal?
We've got, yeah, we've got carryover. Nate, you could probably tell me. We're still in black on food services, so.
Yeah, most school districts in Kansas are. Before COVID, I would say it ran about sixty percent were running in the red. There weren't, there was more than, over half that didn't make any money. And primarily, some of that is because the median school district in Kansas is five hundred kids, you know, so. But you would even see districts of, of your size occasionally that was, was not, was not in the plot, so.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. Let's continue the discussion, but I want to make sure everybody has a chance to ask any other questions from now, so that we can, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Um, so as we study this, a couple of things that I would want to have a better understanding of is that, and that's stuff that we can get internally, uh, the forty-two percent district wide number, what's the breakdown for building?
Yeah.
Um, I think we need to know that. And I also think we need to hear from, uh, students and staff, like what are the participation numbers of employees taking school lunch? And students? And if they're not, why not? I mean, I just think a simple, I think that would be helpful to.
Like a survey?
Mm-hmm. Because that's, I think that's something that would be helpful in identifying what our, what our goals are. We talked about our goals, but how does that manifest in each each building for each population? And that might help us, and then also that gives us an opportunity for, um, the current food staff department to be able to say, hey, here's, here's how we think we could achieve that. And here's what we have to say about that. We kind of did that, you know, when we were struggling with transportation and then we said, hey, we got to at least look at all the options because we see, we see this and we see how we want to get from here to here. That's a hard thing because people do take that very personally and they think that's a reflection of not caring or seeing about the things that they do. And we gave that opportunity to listen and then we didn't end up outsourcing. Doesn't mean we don't care. I I'm personally not prepared to make a decision tonight. Is anybody else? They, or, and if you are, that's okay.
You're talking about a decision to get bids.
Right.
But that, the decision to get bids doesn't lock us in accepting the bid.
That's true.
Does not, does not track.
Well, that's, that's a good point.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't be opposed to that, if they can happen in parallel.
We're not deciding anything tonight except exploring what the numbers look like.
Yeah. And I do want to explore, but I want to have the benefit of understanding how the forty-two percent breaks down and why kids are choosing not to take school lunch, for whatever reason, when when that's the case.
My main concern with going to bid now is the timeline. You know, it's forty-five days out and that's beginning of June. We've got a whole lot of stuff happening between now and beginning of June. Just a, just a couple of things here. I, I mean, I, I think this conversation is more related, this, the bus example is a good one. But I do worry about that, like, are we putting a lot on our staff to do this in addition to all the other things that are currently up in the air with state assessments and bond issues and all that kind of stuff as well? But that's maybe.
Mm-hmm, that's a good point. What's everybody else saying?
I mean, as far as the survey, Bill?
I mean, like, if we could, we put the, at the bid, we're, we're tying up some resources to devote to managing of this business that come in and to recording that information, kind of ultimately getting that in front of, kind of, I guess, the project office and our, our district.
You'd have to go forty-five, forty days out.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, so Chris, I, I think that's a good point. I'm looking at the map or the calendar, right? And that puts it in the middle of May, right? If you start that forty-five days out from July one, is that a better, is that a better timeline than starting the process now?
I know. But it sounds like that's their preferences, the July one, that it can be, like, I mean, it had to be, it could be August one or.
Well, so you, so you would set up a a timeline in terms of, once you get the RFP, uh, like I said, there's a, uh, in that form, you'll have a board date that you're going to approve, right? And that usually is good to do before July one. However, Silver Lake did theirs about July eighth, but they got, their, their director quit the very last day of school and we figured out how to get it done. But, but, but yes, I mean, so, um, your board meeting in June, third Monday, right?
Mm-hmm.
You would, you would be able to to pull that off, you know, in terms of of having enough time to to not have a special meeting somewhere down the line, so. I'm a bit of a super fan.
So, yeah, so if we wanted to hit that deadline to start July one, we'd have to be ready on June nineteenth with bids, which means that that moves the calendar back to, uh, the beginning of May, the end of April. But it's, I mean, it's right about now. We buy ourselves two weeks.
Yeah. It's like, with, and with other things.
Unless, unless we want to start in October or November, which I don't think, I don't think that's optimal.
So in that, in that forty-five days, um, you'll get proposals, you'll have a a date the proposals are going to be due. And you'll have three or four, uh, proposals probably from from companies. Um, and that date will probably be, oh, yeah, I would say middle of May, or the, the, those proposals will be due. You'll have a week for your committee to go through the rubric, score the proposals. And the committee consists of three to five people. You can choose who they are. Um, and then once that's done, you have a a few days for negotiations and then your board meeting. And that's, that's kind of the, how that timeline works.
Yeah, so if we want to move on that, I would, I would suggest the time is now. If we, if we want to put out for bids, right? If we want to sit on it for a while, then then we're looking at a delayed start in the school year. If we decide to go in this direction.
So I guess, Chris, I was still like, what are you, what are you worried about, putting on your staff?
Just thinking of like the, like, for instance, the bond issue coming up in middle of May, right? That's good, that's already putting some of all stress on our staff and community. We're also extending this conversation into hospital and food service, for instance. Regardless of which way the the bond unfurls or devocoes, uh, there's still a list, a different list, two different lists of things we are going to, Chris, have to do in reaction to that, right? And so adding another thing to the plate right now, I'm just, want to be conscientious of what we're asking our folks to do. Not that the conversation doesn't need to happen, just like, I don't know. Time, time away, like, would this be a better conversation to have next March? Or next, or next February or something you set up right now? And I don't know the answer to that question, I'm just saying, like, if I were in your shoes, for instance, I would know if you had this conversation right now necessarily, given everything else that's going on.
How big of a difference is it from the July date and then January date?
It doesn't, honestly, it doesn't matter, personally, it doesn't matter to me in operations, right? It's really up to the district as far as when you, when you want to get started, right? So, like I said, we've started districts October first, we've started districts January first, right? So, you know, we're doing, there's no pressure from us for you to start this process, right? Because, you know, other people will will turn in bids as well, right? So this is something for you to look into. Uh, when you start, it could be September first, October first, November first. It doesn't matter to us. Um, it's really up to you and the district, yeah, to make the right decision.
Other thoughts?
I don't see this as a huge passing on staff. Um, the food service department, they're going to have to meet an excellent discussion. But but as far as staff, it would be, they will or potentially not fill out the information, but they just don't need, you know, the, and press is probably does the most for me.
The RFP process will involve, because there's score, I mean, that's, we've, that's the part where committee has to be assembled and evaluate. Raise your hand if you have time for an extra committee right now. I mean, that's part of what Chris is saying. However, the right thing to do is the right thing to do, no matter when it is, so, you know, I get it from both directions.
From that point of view, I just wondered if our three who have been carrying the load on the bond, have any, have an opinion on it?
I thought you were volunteering. You're already doing it, go ahead.
Keep it going, one more thing. Have an opinion on waiting and maybe tackling this once that is not such a thing.
All right, that's me. Yeah.
Jack, when you said the committee, you said five people.
Yeah, and there are some, there are some districts that just do three. I mean, um, some will do, for example, I'll give you one example, you, Nathan, and.
Megan.
Megan, thank you.
Be a board member.
Yeah, uh, there are some that will get a teacher and a couple of principals and a, um, and a secretary.
So the board members are, don't have to be involved in it?
What's that?
A board member does not have to be involved in it?
No, absolutely.
Oh, I misunderstood that. Okay, can you clarify?
Now, there are some districts that do involve board members in it, so, uh, but there are some that don't, so.
I mean, I think it would be nice to have a board member as part of it, but if the entire group doesn't have to be.
No, 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 not at all.
Something, that's, that's helpful to clarify.
Well, I will say that if it pushes the discussion forward, I will volunteer, to be honest. This is something that I feel pretty strongly about. We have to do food service for kids.
You just heard us make free food.
Samples, say hospital.
Tony's like, you have to have samples.
So, so if we want to have a board member on this committee that reviews these RFPs, I'll be happy to do it. Yeah. I think, I think we kind of owe it to the district to look at numbers, so. I think giving bids is a responsible thing to do. I also want to be respectful of our existing staff and keep that in mind as we go on and look at bids. And and that's a decision we have to make after we see all the numbers.
Yeah. I agree. Okay, so those two things can run in parallel, is what we're talking about, right?
I want to go to Ottawa.
Me too.
Only three of you.
Three at a time?
Yeah, you guys can go at different times.
Okay, three.
So what we're asking for in, in general, yeah, because it does need to be, it needs to be.
Do we have one?
Would you, I don't.
Well, so in the executive content of this.
Yeah.
So, um, I would make a motion that we direct superintendent and others in the district who are involved in this to entertain bids for food service contracts. Need to be more specific, do we need to have a timeline on that? Doesn't need to have a forty-five days.
I don't think that it needs to be too specific.
I don't think that needs to be. We should follow that process. I would make a motion to stay processed or.
I got what you just said.
Interesting.
Okay.
Second.
Tony has moved and Phil has segmented to direct the superintendent to entertain bids for food service contracts. All those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand. If I oppose, motion carries six one. Um, this part doesn't require a motion, but the opportunity to get the information, as we talked about earlier, um, which doesn't need to be a thirty-point survey, but having a better grasp of that will be helpful concurrently with the other items as well. Does anybody else have anything to add? They're looking for those, we continue to say.
Just food service or, or family, or having students as well, or?
Yes, yes, to, to, I have a better, to be able to have a better breakdown of the overall district wide number and then also having input, uh, per building for those who are not participating, so that we can have a better understanding of why.
Yeah.
Um, and that doesn't always have to be about the food, it might be about the schedule. You know, there's any number of things that can weigh into that and I want to make sure we have, there. I I don't have as great of a grasp on that as I would like to, being able to then look at a bid process entirely, so. Anything else to add? Okay. All right, next item is operations update, sinkhole update.
Right, you're not required to stay for the whole forty-eight unless you are really interested to hear about the sinkhole. I meant to tell you that before we got started.
Sinkhole comments.
There was no public comment.
I'm not going to ask you guys to make any decisions on this.
I just note that for the record, that since we now have a segue, that there was no public comment.
I would have inter.
Yes, I know you would have.
I would have interjected at seven P M, but there was, we've noted it.
All right, thank you, Megan.
I can honestly say, I thought I'd say it all in thirteen years, this is my first sinkhole update.
I said, I said the exact same thing when I put it on the agenda. I was like, I never thought I would put sinkhole update on an agenda.
Hope it's just one part.
Yes.
Well, luckily it wasn't under a school or anything, so. Um, out here on the exit lane of the drive, their bus drive, I was called actually by Charlie and Linda from Transportation told me about a big pothole. When I got out there, it was a pothole. Uh, it was a sinkhole, about thirty-six inches deep, um, probably about that big around. Um, once I got to looking into it, it was actually a tunnel all the way across, um, the drive lane, right? Going right by the tubes. Um, it waters entering on the west side. Um, it's caused by the, uh, concrete, that used to be a all-concrete spillway between the road and the drive. Uh, for some reason, KDOT decided, busted up, caused water to, uh, shoot underneath the, uh, concrete there at the inlet, caused a tunnel. They've come in, uh, dug out the, uh, asphalt. It wasn't as dire as it looked when we looked in the hole, because once it got out towards the drive lane, it got thicker, the asphalt did, but it still needed to be fixed. Um, tubes are in good shape. Um, they've got AB three gravel in there, getting packed down. Uh, they'll be back this week when the asphalt plant start producing and, um, get her covered back up. I'm going to make sure that they do, uh, on the inlet side, get in there and and pack that full of concrete or asphalt so we don't have this problem again, directs the water into the tubes. So, and like I said before, tubes look good.
This is all on KDOT, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and and I wish I had a little bit more leverage to kind of push them along a little bit more, but I don't.
You know, if they're.
Yes.
If you can get that leverage, let us know.
Yes. So, okay, any questions? Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Dual credit enrollment agreements.
So what I've got for you here, this is just the, uh, the annual, the dual credit enrollment that allows us, an articulation agreement with Neosho County that allows our students to get high school and college credit. Um, so what I'm, you've signed it before, we're signing it, I'd like to, to sign it again. Um, so, I think it's, it's a good opportunity for our kids. It's one of the things that the post-secondary success factor, we've talked about this actually, a district like Council Point, one of the four factors is opportunity to get the high school credit or college credit while in high school. And, uh, this is a mechanism we can use for some of our kids.
This covers for five years or?
I believe it was the five years. Now, if you would ask me on Friday, I would have told you, um.
It's a five years.
Yeah, it's the five years, yeah, yep.
So remind me, we've got an agreement with Neosho County. Do we also have students that take courses through Johnson County?
Yeah.
And any other community colleges?
Grant, what other community colleges are we partnering with? That's Neosho and Johnson County, do we have any? Do we have Washburn?
Washburn.
Yeah.
Do they go to Peaslee type college? Okay.
We've got a few kids.
And do you have any sense of, of the numbers of students that are, that are private? If you don't, that's fine, this is, this is what I.
I have a spreadsheet I have to. We, obviously, since COVID and the reduced availability to do things virtually.
Yeah.
Um, those enrolls are much higher. I can, I can find that information. Um, not so much. Uh, we've seen a decrease whenever students that are going outside because the travel time becomes a little bit trade, right? A little, honestly, wasted.
Because students go out with a nursing.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we have had some meetings that do that recently. Um, if you remember, we used to actually bus the kids, we had a really good number. Um, I don't know, I think that's sure the data, but I, I have it, I just need to find it.
It's all right, yeah, it's just curiosity. I'm going to approve the. Did somebody have another thing, sorry? No, 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 I was going to make a motion.
I'm going to approve the dual credit enrollment agreement of Neosho County Community College.
Second?
Yep.
Andy moved and Susan seconded to approve the dual credit enrollment agreement. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Old, is, is everybody doing okay restroom-wise or? Okay, let's get through old. Okay. Let's get through old business. Is that okay? Is that doable before we do? Okay. Old business, bond update, DLR final contract.
Nate has done a great job working with, with DLR and KASB to go through the contract and bouncing machines back and forth. And so what we've got there is fun stuff before we proceed here. One of the documents there is just kind of just the overview of what's included. And based on what I'm, you know, what I'm hearing, based on what I'm seeing from, from KASB's communications with Nate, this is a pretty standard standard. Nate, do you have any thoughts? He just stepped out. Perfect timing there. Yeah. The answer to your question there, yes.
So I'm remembering these numbers right. We will have paid DLR about 75% of the contract prior to construction. Does that get, just the back design, government design, construction documents, all that's all paid?
I'm not, I'm not seeing that as prior to. I think that's.
That's the percentage of their, their fee up here of 6%. It's broken down into those percentages. So this is even 100% of what their pay is. That's exactly, that's how they are writing up their 6% and how they're allocating it.
How they're, yeah, how they're allocating. That's 6%, 15% is for the schematic design.
But none of that will be paid until, or the bond has to pass before anything.
Any other questions or points of clarification?
Nate, do you have any thoughts or any?
So is this pretty standard?
Yeah. Contract we made a few changes.
And so we need a motion to accept it, correct?
I'm moving to accept the contract with DLR as presented.
Andy moved and Tony seconded to accept the DLR final contract as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Thanks to all for the work on that. It's been an ongoing, ongoing thing. So great job. Bond update, career and technical education discussion, along with some other stuff. For career and technical education, where are we with, with what has been talked about?
So Brent and Kelly and I have been talking about career and technical education as it relates to the addition within the bond process. One of the key things that really needs to happen with that is the movement of Mr. Harmon's courses and programs from that where he is right now, the facility that was built in 1977 and get him into the structure that would be connecting the two buildings. We want to reduce as much, we want to reduce the student flow, the consistent student flow to that space. And so reserving the facility space for those two, those three programs there that he does would be important. One of the conversations that we've had is the drafting program that he has itself, the tables that are part of the drafting, those can actually be part of a flexible learning option, meaning those tables can be used for a variety of purposes. So if you think about within the concept that they've got in that addition, that flexible classroom space could be outfitted with the tables and what's needed for the drafting side of things. And then looking to be able to utilize some additional of the four spaces in that facility. Three would be the drafting, flexible classroom space, small engine machines and, let's see, woodworking, the woods that he does. The other solution that is important is the culinary arts side of things. The work that needs to be done to that space to bring it up to industry standards at this point in time would be a good allocation for that slot. So of those four spaces, it would be best, I think, in conversation with Brent, Kelly, I talked with the CTE teachers last weekend and also again today about the utilization space and what they are all, CTE teacher are 100% in agreement that Tom's programs are definitely ideal for a new facility. They want his program to, they want to see him in that space for a variety of purposes. But one being to get him into the building and an updated facility. And two, that there is that, the ability to repurpose the current space that is the CTE spot, excuse me, the culinary arts spot. You've got the open classroom space there that could be leveraged and utilized for flexible classroom, whether it's for CTE or other uses for the building. And by flexible classroom, we're talking about ability for small group discussions, brainstorming to occur, or maybe that's another space for a classroom instruction to occur as we're looking at expansion opportunities for the building. You've got that. Right. Next year, I've heard so many positive things about the ag science program. I was just talking to a student the other day. I came to pick up a driver from practice and I look over and the student is sitting on a desk doing homework, waiting for her mom to come get her. Talking to her, she says, I gotta get my homework done now before my mom picks me up because we gotta go home and work cattle. And I said, oh, working cattle. So the day just keeps going. She said, yes. And I said, so are you interested in the ag science class? She goes, oh, yeah. Well, I'm signing up for this. I'm excited to do those. And so that, that's, it's cool to see that. One of the things that we could see is the repurposing of the current culinary space for the ag sciences with access to the plumbing, the electrical that's in there, and even a classroom layout, I think, would be good for that program. So in terms of that space there, that's, that's what we're envisioning. That's the vision there. It allows for some, some expansion. As we go through the repurposing side, does that lend the opportunity then to utilize the space in there building that currently can be used for CTE for other purposes, be it for the junior high or for other opportunities that come. I don't want to go too overly aggressive there with that, but I'm excited about the opportunities that the CTE programs have for our kids. You know, the teachers, one of the things we want to make sure, and I've told the teachers here that I met with, the existing teachers is those that are going to be impacted by that space will be part of the next phase and timeline that would occur should the bond pass. So additional focus groups would take place. I think feedback and assistance would need to take place where Ms. Weaver's room is. Some work would need to be done to make some adjustments based on the space that would occupy the wall for her. If the space that are inside the CTE facility, I think our custodians and grounds crew are going to need to be a part of that. Custodians are going to know exactly where an outlet should go because they're, they're working in that space to keep it student ready. Initially, the teachers that are in there and the students that are occupying those spaces and then feedback from the industry as part of, you know, what can we do to best step these programs up for the career side of things. So with our existing CTE pathways, you know, we've, we've got capital outlay plans that we may need to adjust and adapt to make sure that we're looking at classes and programs that don't get, you know, set to the sides that we're not repeating the cycle with another, another area, if that makes any sense. And I 100% agree with him on that. We need to, we need to make sure that that doesn't get lost in the shop. I think it's, it's an exciting time as this is starting to get closer to the election day. That's kind of where we, that's where we are from that, that side of things.
That's great. I really appreciate all the work because, do you want to have something to say?
Yeah, I do have something. You know, the other part that goes unspoken about the CTE building because I've seen comments, right? And I think we're missing like part of the issue of including these spaces, right, rather differently, is we still have to address a huge security issue that occurs in our building each day because I probably will run the numbers, ask to the number of students that go out to the shop each day with the number of eighth grade or junior high students that come over to our building, right? And so I think that's a piece that's been missing. You know, like part of that is it's too full. It's like killing two birds with one stone. Like we're addressing a couple of issues by moving that building and then obviously making it secure, right? So I mean, the end goal would be get to that, right? I think we're on agreement because I, I don't want to have a scenario where I have somebody, right? That follows a student in and then wonders, well, how did they get into the building? I'm going to tell you how they got into the building. They came in through this unsecured entrance. So I think that's a piece that goes untold where some people can't understand it. I'm not sure why. That's nobody to see here.
You know, I think one of the factors that Brent is kind of speaking to, as the eighth graders come over, say classes, whether it's Spanish, journalism, algebra, when they're done to get back, they don't walk back through the breezeway to get buzzed in. They have to walk all the way around up the front door, all the way through around the PAC and ringing doors up there. And there are times that I've gone into the junior high office and there, there's four or five kids there and the secretaries are trying to navigate that. I mean, that's a lot of, that's just, that's just not a, an ideal scenario. And so this, this will lead me to that. I could, if I could give you an answer, this predates me, that's where the buzzer to get kids back in, Kelly, exists on the junior high side. To get in on, on the junior high PAC side, through the breezeway, you have to have a pass card. Go ahead, Derek.
It's good to do that, which is.
And there are high schoolers going to the junior high as well.
I was just going to say, I didn't know my kids go over there because their coaches teach them that building. So that's, that's their normal thing to do. And I didn't know they had to walk all the way around to the front.
It's kind of a plan. Maybe some committees, you know.
Maybe that's, maybe there's a way we could solve that. Well, for the career and technical education part of this and how that evolves, you know, I, I do think that, that one of the misconceptions has been there's, there's been an attempt to create a space without any idea for what was going to go in it. As those decisions are, are being made, it has to go through a methodical process because if we're sitting here from the 30,000 foot view as we settle along and said, well, it ought to be this, this and this, well, that doesn't mean that is data driven. It just means that might be our personal opinions. And so I appreciate the work of everyone. All of that's been done in conjunction with advice for best practices from, from both the construction company and the architecture. Here at the architectural firm, you know, you have to have a sequence of how you gather information so that you can get to the point to sort of have these big picture ideas of what's going to go in that space. And not only what's going to go in that space, but how are we going to utilize other spaces that we have? You've identified all of that, but I know that comes with a lot of work of getting feedback from students, checking all that with staff because again, we want to make sure that, that staff voice always is a meaningful part of the process as it should be. They're the ones there. So I appreciate everybody's patience with that because, you know, none of us do a bond full time as our occupations frequently. And so I think sometimes like, wait, are we doing things the right way? Listen, if we had every baseboard identified, we would be putting the cart ahead of the horse because the bond has not passed. So there's only, and we would be outsourcing or paying for services to investigate it further in a presumptive way that would not reflect the fact that the election has not happened yet. So just want to assure everyone that all of those, all of those lanes that again have to run concurrently are happening. And thank you very much for overseeing that work, Mr. Dodge. The only other thing under bond update, a couple of things, and we're going to, this is partially a plug for the town hall this Thursday night, but just some mill levy history that we sent, if you can pull that up. Yeah, sorry. I was trying to get lead time. Like what? This is, this will be part of the presentation for Thursday night. Want to again remind everybody that this is the second and final town hall. It'll be at the Performing Arts Center at 6:30. But just as a piece of information, you have the, the district mill levy history. And we'll, we'll spend more time, Mr. Dodge, and we'll spend more time talking about that Thursday night. I want to make sure that's, that's part of that record. We've, it's come up a lot and then I've had so many people say, well, show me. Well, there it is. I've tried to email as many people back, but why not include that in this, in this part of our meeting as well? That shows the mill levy history for the district. It also references when members of the subcommittee have said, you know, we've, and we can, you know, I don't want to say the wrong thing and get into an issue of semantics, but when we released three mills from 21, or from 2021 to 2122, you can see it goes from 57.0, I think it's 259. 258, thank you, to 54.0, there we go. Okay, so 57.259 to 54.909. When we talk about releasing three mills a couple of years ago, that's, that's the exact moment that we're talking about when we say, you know, now with this.
And it's also, I think, and this is me editorializing here, that we started the year trying to keep our mill flat this year.
Correct.
And through the vote of ruling.
It actually took it down.
It took it down.
And, and so that 49 doesn't reflect, in the spirit of transparency, that doesn't reflect our budgetary choice. Our budgetary choice was again to keep it flat, but that was the ruling. So now that's actually where it is. And we're asking that what people need to vote on is our 2.9 to four of that. So just want to make sure we're giving numbers as well as historical reference. I think that's really important because you're seeing a slope and not Everest there. And people can do without what they will, but at least those are the real numbers for folks to study as part of each citizen's discernment regarding their choice with the bond. Is there anything else to add?
What's the date on the part?
2007.
2007, eight?
Thank you.
Yeah, can we make the font smaller?
Yeah. So it starts with 2007 to 2008 and shows to current. Thank you. I should have included that. I think that's hard to see. Okay.
Is that on that webpage?
I've asked for it to be, and it will be a part of the presentation this Thursday night. It was. We got it, we got it a while back, but with the updated, with including this for you, we got it back Saturday evening. So, yeah. Yep. It's just a good reference to have because, you know, we don't all have all those numbers memorized at every point. I mean, sometimes you do, but not every person. And, and you know, how things impact people's pocketbooks, that's important. So, so those numbers are important too. All right. Does anybody else have anything to add under that? All right. And I, let's take a five minute recess, please, before we transition to new business. Thank you. Ready to go? All right, we'll call this meeting back to order and pivot to new business with student device buyback. Thank you, Kay.
Also running down. You can't really see me, I built my computer. So, we have, because the seniors leave in May and April, we traditionally talk about them buying their device back. And we have done that for, I think, pretty much since we started the iPad program. In the last few years, we've upped it to kind of a retail price because we had a plan for the iPads if they aren't sold, so they, they go into the elementary schools. So, I did bring, last year, we were at $290 for the iPad buyback, and that's with the, you know, the case and the charger. They do have a keyboard case now. But those were the same, those were iPad sixes, they're still iPad sixes, but with quite a bit less memory. So, we go from $128 last year to $32 this year, and that, that does bring the price down quite a bit. So, kind of based on prices I've looked at for how these are selling, I came up with a 225 for the seniors.
Move we allow seniors to purchase their district issued iPad case to $225 and allow the curators to purchase theirs for $60. Did you?
Nailed it. Second.
Thank you for sending it to us ahead of time.
I did send this ahead of time.
Just, just so that it's noted, we've all seen that, so we do have a motion on the floor. Okay, Susan moved and Phil seconded to accept those as presented.
I mean, there was a pause.
Yeah. Susan, I, those in favor.
Getting back on to the stage.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. I did put those under one agenda item, so I probably should have talked about them both at the same time, but same, same kind of thing.
You were very successful with that. Do you want to take the next one?
I'm leaving now.
Yes. Well, you know, that incentivizes getting all the information in advance, so then it makes it really... You appreciate that. Thanks, Kay. All right, 2324 district calendar.
All right, so, Mr. Curran, he and I have been talking about the, we talked about the 2324 calendar on multiple occasions. He had asked me if, if I had ever considered looking at extending Thanksgiving break to, instead of three days, five days. And one of the rationale behind that is, you know, we see a downturn in attendance in that time, and it's a good, good week for families to go, and they, they miss those two days. And so, then we have, you know, small numbers of students attending, which makes it challenging to do anything new in a class. So, he had asked me if that was something I'd ever given thought to, and I told him none of those are things that I've seen districts do, and I'm, I'm not opposed to the idea. In conjunction, looking at the calendar, we have a unique situation where the winter break was, was incredibly long in, in terms of just how the weekends fell with, with things. So, within the end of the semester. And so, he made the recommendation, if we were to make the 20th a no-contact day and move, replace that on the 22nd and the morning of the 23rd, the afternoon 22nd, the morning of the 23rd, and the November 21st day, we made a contact day on December 21st, it would, the hours of student contact time would level out to allow for no school to be had that Thanksgiving week, almost a fall break, if you will. So, that, that was the, the change he suggested, and it's, it's something that I can tell you as a teacher, it's tough when you don't have a full class. And it allows, lets families that connection time, we're still meeting with our students, which require a number of hours. So, on behalf of Mike and I, we'd like to make the, he asked to make that change to the school calendar for 2324.
I'm a big fan.
I like it because I'm all for rigorous instruction when the kids are in class, and I'm, I know all too well about the times where right before the holidays, it's missing, and so you're doing something, but it's not necessarily a rigorous instruction.
I'll move we correct the changes to the 2324 school calendar to reflect that no school will be in session from November 25th to 24th of 2023. Second.
Andy's moved and Kelly has seconded to approve the 2324 calendar as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Our motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Inter local report.
We have actually had two meetings since our last meeting, and I only have one at the point. So, the main thing was, we have officially hired a position called an integration specialist to kind of serve as a instructional coach type of role for the co-op. That'll help with, you know, new teachers with mentoring, but also help with IP writing as well as integration into the classroom for accommodations, modifications against IP as well. So, it's a new position for us, where actually taking on a staff member who's been with us for a couple of years and had been in a previous role similar to this. So, make a new type of aspect for our co-op, and this first will start all three districts. So, we're still working on what that looks like in terms of what allocations we're following, but it'll be a new feature we're going to have for some of the, we have a lot of teachers who are on waivers and in the first year of teaching as well. So, so look for that change to come about, which will be a helping for our staff to get more coaching and hopefully help in more retention of our staff as well. Any other updates from our last meeting?
No, they were, they were, they were in board meetings. They were, they were running perfectly. I'm about to cuss. We're reporting.
All right, that's up. Any questions for you guys on that?
Thank you. Okay. Miscellaneous, want to make sure everybody sees the Baldwin High School Jazz Ensemble attachment, not attachment, but inclusion in your folder. This shows the in-service workshop from February 25th. So, it's pretty neat to make sure, point that out. Shows pieces, the philosophy. Again, just a reminder, that, that group did not exist just even a few years ago. So, this has been a, I mean, we've had a band, but jazz ensemble in this rendition has, has not been this way. So, a really good response to that for a lot of kids.
Can I think back on that? On Wednesday will be the large group. I wish, I should have thought of this during announcements.
Announcements, I know, duh.
Well, we have large group, we're hosting large group here on Wednesday. So, over at the PAC, Derrickson have a lot of, a lot of kids over on his side of the world, and then over at Baker, we've got some, some kids there. Talked to Stuart over the weekend, we want to be able to help districts that may be in any transportation, trying to shuttle kids from their F and B and two different groups, being able to make sure that we can help shuttle them. So, Stuart's communicated with Linda about, about that, so that we can, we can make it a positive experience while they're here in Baldwin.
That's awesome.
Do we know who printed these out for them?
Yeah, this is, well, Nora Gordon. So, thanks to Nora Gordon for design of the program, I would assume.
I was just thinking this would be really good, like district office or the high school office, like for multiple organizations and after-school careers.
We've got a stack over in the district's office, I noticed, in our mailboxes.
Yeah. This is just really nice, like, I know a lot more about the program now than, you know, six-page packet.
Yeah.
Who's involved in it, the origins of it, and what they play, and it's just funny. I love to see that kind of thing from more of our clubs and programs for our case to participate in. It's good, good PR.
The only other thing I can think of, last meeting, under miscellaneous, we talked about paying attention to our strategic plan, and one of our target areas for the board was to make sure that we were doing onsite tours of our, of our facility. You know, ideally, I would have liked to make sure, we didn't commit ourselves to a certain number per year or anything like that, but being able to have meeting time or official tour time. Mr. Dodge and I talked about it, and because there's no shortage of things going on, we thought maybe, and if it's okay with you guys, that we would plan to this district tour idea for early fall. Two reasons. One, don't even know where we would fit it in right now. Two, if the bond doesn't pass, we need to be back in the facilities and looking at everything again. So, rather than trying to squeeze it right now, we thought maybe that would be a better plan, because we did put it in our strategic plan, so if it's there, we should do it. But that was kind of what we thought about and wanted to make sure that was okay with the rest of you, that we target that timeframe, thought that would be more achievable. Okay.
Did you guys talk about scheduling, is it all in one day, or is it spread out for a couple mornings every week, or what's...
Well, I thought, we thought that would also give more time to think about all of that, too, but just to say, hey, we're going to do this in the fall, we'll, we'll figure out what it's going to look like, whether we want to make it a meeting and it's all seven, or whether we want to break into smaller groups so that we don't have coma. We, and it also gives you guys time to say, hey, this is how I think we should do it, and here's what would be most doable for my schedule. So, because there's pros and cons, no matter, no matter what you do, but rather just, let's make sure and do it, but let's do it thoughtfully. Okay. Great. Anything else under miscellaneous? Okay. Superintendent's report.
I don't have anything more than what we've already shared tonight. It's been a busy, busy night.
Yes, all the things. Okay, well, then we will get ready to move into executive. The first item, I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dodge and Mr. Breedingham regarding, let's see here, where did I put it? There it is. The exception under coma for school security matters to ensure the security of the school, its buildings, and/or its systems do not be jeopardized, and that that will, the open meeting will return at, it's 8:55 now. How long do you guys want?
Three minutes, Brent. You like it all? 10 minutes.
The open meeting will return, resume at 9:05. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
It was Chris. It was Chris. How do you just shout?
Student matters related to the exception relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student or students under coma. And the open meeting will resume at 9:21.
Please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dodge and Mr. Brittingham to discuss student matters relating to the exception relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting student or students under coma. The open meeting will resume at 9:26.
Please.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. I
I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Dodge and Mr. Euler to discuss negotiations pursuant to the exception under POMA for employer employee negotiations and the open meeting will resume at 9:56.
Aye.
Yeah, 9:56. All who's in favor please say aye.
Aye. At least.
I move we enter into executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation pursuant to the exception under comma for non-elected personnel and the open meeting will resume in... The open meeting will resume at 10:05. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
personnel related to the exception under comma for non-elected personnel and the open meeting will resume at 10:19. All those in... or second?
Second.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
He has checked himself. I know, I didn't...
And I thought I was bad.
Okay.
I'm Dan, here we go.
So we will call the meeting back to order. Quick logistical question. Is there still a special meeting happening for Friday or do we not?
Well.
We're not sure yet. You'll be in touch. That's okay.
The special meeting was.
This is only Monday, right? Yeah. Okay, I'm getting it.
So yes, it was going to be Friday at noon based on.
Friday at noon is what you. So potentially there could be a special meeting Friday at noon just to make sure.
On Zoom.
On Zoom.
That would be for hiring purposes.
Right.
If we can get.
Just so that's on the radar.
For transportation and then possibly a P E position.
Possibly, yeah. Okay.
And possibly a first grade position.
Okay, well.
Show off.
Just so, just so that everyone's aware, watch for that if it's coming. Okay, so we have two motions. The first one will be regarding, we want to have a motion to accept the evaluation. If someone would like to make that.
I may please have the evaluation for superintendent. And that's it?
Nope. Okay, Susan has moved and Tony has seconded that we approve the spring evaluation for superintendent Dodge. All those in favor, please say aye. Raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, seven zero. And then we have the personnel report, which is especially exciting because of the position that we approved last month. Very cool.
To make a motion, we approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Kelly has moved and Phil has seconded to approve the personnel report as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries, seven zero.
Motion adjourned.
And.
Second.
All right, Phil and Susan, all those in favor, please say aye. Meeting adjourned, 10:21. Thank you, everybody.